Okay, we will bring this meeting to order, a regular council meeting for December the 19th. It's 3:00 PM and we will begin with a land acknowledgement with Councillor Wing, please.
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. The Town of Innisville acknowledges that we are meeting on Treaty VII territorial, the ancestral and traditional territory of the Blackfoot Confederacy, Kynai, Pekani, and Siksekka, as well as Tsutina First Nation and Stony Dakota First Nation. We acknowledge that this territory is home to the Métis Nation of Alberta Region III within the historical northwest Métis homeland. We acknowledge the many First Nations, Métis, and Inuit who have lived in and cared for these lands for generations. We are grateful for the traditional knowledge keepers and elders who are still with us today and those who have gone before us. We make this acknowledgement as an act of reconciliation and gratitude to those whose territory we reside on.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Wing. And we'll now move into 2.1, additions and deletions to the agenda. I have... Do you have anything, CEO Becker? No? Okay. Kate, can I please have someone make a motion to adopt the agendas presented? Councillor Bates?
I'll move the agenda as presented.
Okay, thank you, all in favor. Okay, we'll move on to 3.1, the minutes of the regular council meeting for December the 12th. There is an amendment on 8.1, on the correspondence and information, so we will add into that motion the Recreation Complex/Aquatic Centre. Anything else? Councillor Heistad?
Yeah, I'm just going off the top of my head. I think that I also had MPC, I should add, with my roundtable.
Okay. Okay, then I'll have somebody make a motion, please, to adopt these minutes. Councillor Dunham?
Mayor Barkley, I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you, all in favor. Okay, carried, thank you. And we will move into 4.1 with CEO Becker in his report.
Hello, Council, thanks, Mayor Barkley. Just to be quick, as you'll see through social media, that the town office will be closed December 26th, 27th in lieu of the Christmas Day and Boxing Day and January 1st landing on the weekend. Had a little bit of time away, whether it's a sick day and vacation. Also looking for council guidance on calendar. We can do it later, but I just want to plant the seed with you with our potential engagement with Red Deer County Council on either January 9th, 11th, or 12th. Really no time determined. The 9th is a council day, I believe. So just looking for your guidance, whether it's now or later, you can tell me how you wish to coordinate one of those dates if they work for you. I'll stop there, Mayor Barkley. There's one other item I'd like to just add into my report.
So did we want to decide on the date now or did we want Cara to send out an email, maybe like a doodle poll or something? Or... No?
If you don't mind, I would maybe like it if we could discuss now and kind of get that narrowed down before Christmas holidays so I can get back to Red Deer County.
So I have one potential conflict, depending on the time of day. I have a mountain view... I'm sorry, that got moved, so I don't have a conflict. I could do any of the days.
Any of those days are fine for me.
For me as well.
Do you know about the time?
I was just maybe going to treat this as all the other engagements with board members and councils and was thinking an evening supper, kind of like we have with the others, if everybody is okay with that.
Yeah, I can do evenings, cannot do daytime on those days, but...
I do believe just from my correspondence with Red Deer County that they're in favor of that as well, maybe at dinner.
I'm good for any one of those evenings, not daytime, but evenings.
So maybe the 11th or 12th? Because we have council on the Mondays.
So please let me know which one.
Well, let's do a hand poll now, we'll see. Does January the 11th suit everybody?
Sure.
Councillor Maseros, yeah. So... All right, and CEO Becker, you had some more to add?
Yeah, Mayor Barkley, I just want to talk to you about the council chambers, just on our system a little bit, and just kind of where we started and where we're at right now, and starting to get council's feedback. We have a lack of policy, too. So fitting.
Is that boring?
He's just starting to record what I'm gonna say. Anyway, so of course with COVID, we started going online. We heard of Zoom finally and Teams, et cetera. That was a means of communications for largely our council meetings even during that time through Zoom. We can do that through the MGA, through our procedure by law. So as we advanced, we started using Zoom, not just for council, but for delegations and media could come on, listen to council meetings, and also invite public to have, you know, open mic. And we haven't really heard so much an open mic, but still the opportunity to address that part of your agenda. So with that, we heard a little bit, a little bit of time, and it's largely through media about just inconsistencies and some frustrations, and I'd say public, too, just on kind of hit and miss when using this technology. And our system that was built, completed in 2017, didn't really have Zoom and this technology in mind, is more internal. So as we advanced, we tried to build it in. And what we found out, just with the budget meeting and getting some feedback, is that we're not hitting a very good batting average with using our technical system. With that feedback, we did have an internal meeting, and we found out we're hitting about 75%. So of a service quality, we're accurate in providing what we're hoping to provide to the community 75% of the time, which is not a service we want to provide at 75%. What technology, what I told the staff, you know, we should be shooting 95-plus percent, you know, give ourselves a little bit. This is technology, we're never going to be 100% perfect, but we need to be darn sure we're gonna shoot for almost perfect. And it's no fault of staff, I will say. What we're working with is internal systems, but also external systems. And it's kind of a makeshift, as I told you. It was not built upon the Zoom and this engagement as we're trying to use it now. So I just wanted to let council know we're hitting the ball 75% of the time. And I just wanted to let you know that. And right now, from my perspective, it's not acceptable. And what I believe, and I'll get into having your feedback, but what I believe are the options, our status quo and continue to work on it to resolve, knowing that we have 75% hitting the mark, or we shut it down and we work to resolve the issues. Until we have that 95-plus percent, then we'll get the system back working. My recommendation right now is to... We are advancing policy developments, that's really based on your feedback, as I recommend today. We shut it down until we can find out how we're gonna best deliver this service, 95% plus. And, yeah, I don't know what else to tell you. If we shut it down and then continue building on and troubleshoot it, we can have it on the background to build it as we move along, so we're not just done. But right now, we cannot guarantee anything more than what we're doing right now. I think in time, as we build it, we'll get up to 80%, 85%, but it's gonna take us probably 2023 to get to that place. Our system is coming of age, it's five years approximate. That is about the lifespan, what we're hearing on the technology that we have. And we'll certainly likely build a business case to do it differently with the technology that'll be best fitting for the policy that we're hoping for you to develop. So I'll stop there to see if there's any feedback or if there's conversation regarding this.
CEO Becker, can we go back using Zoom? Because we seem to use that quite effectively during COVID the last couple of years.
Mayor Barkley, we have had issues with Zoom, too. So maybe it's not quite 75%. So just, and I may have to candid speak to it, but we have two systems. One was Zoom that we used, another one is a live streaming system. So we still record our minutes, our meetings, our year meetings, and we make them available to the public. So that'll happen whatever we use. But the system that we have used, it's a live streaming system, just like Zoom has given us the grief as well. And Ken could speak more specifically to the batting average on each one, but both have given us trouble on its own means.
Yeah, and I think it's important to know that 100% of the meetings have been recorded, I understand, so it's not like that's been missed and people can catch up the next morning if they have to over the next day or two. So, Councillor Heistad?
Yeah, I appreciate that, CEO Becker. I personally believe that you still continue on. I knew that we had a transition from the live stream probably a number of months ago, probably three, four months ago. My thoughts are, keep on doing Zoom as is. I think the public is engaged and that wants to be engaged or do the open mic if they choose to do so, was working fine. We did a transition about four months ago. As to technology, the technology is old, like we need new technology. That's the reality of it because of the, you know, COVID hit. And this is not the only council chambers that's gonna, you know, need the transition. But those are my thoughts, and I appreciate you bringing it forward.
Councillor Dunham?
This is a tough one. I don't know, I defer to administration. I mean, if we're having that many issues and we are there and you want to build upon it, then I definitely would like to go with what your recommendations are. I don't know what the statistics are for what we have as attendance, but I do know that when we reach out to Cara when we're talking about open mic, which obviously we don't have at this point, that there generally isn't anyone on. So as Mayor Barkley mentioned, we do have that available the next day. So if people want to attend, obviously it's a little bit more difficult during the wintertime, but there is the opportunity for people to be in the auditorium partaking within the meetings, so...
Okay, thank you. Councillor Maseros?
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. Through to CEO Becker. I'm just wondering, what does that 75% batting average mean? Does that mean that 25% falls on us or is it more about the users? And, yeah, sorry, I had another question and it just slipped my mind, but I guess the main thing is, where are we falling through the cracks with that 25%?
Mayor Barkley, to Councillor Maseros, so what I mean is, we're only... The system is only working 75% of the time to what we want it to work. Like it's... The technology, like right before the meeting this morning, we did a test, it worked. As we moved into this meeting, it did not work. So we don't know... We did a reset, not working. So it could be internally, it could be externally. We don't know where the bumps are occurring at this given time.
Okay, so it's inconsistent?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Harrison?
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. Just a couple of questions. How many people, on the average, are watching our live stream? And I know it's frustrating for the people that are out there when they see something that doesn't work. And I'm afraid that they're just gonna get upset and shut everything off. So my suggestion would be, and my recommendation would be, is we shut it down, we have access the following day. We shut it down until you get it fixed, because I've heard a couple of times that there's nothing more frustrating than you get into it and the system goes wonky. And I don't think that's right. I think we're way more professional than that, so that would be my recommendation. Thank you.
Councillor Bates?
Well, I haven't heard any feedback personally. But my tendency would be to support administration's recommendation and shut it down. And that way, anybody who really wants to make sure that they're engaged can be here in the chambers, which is what we always used to do. And I'm not saying we shouldn't trend backwards all the time, but that way they can't be disappointed, they'll be here. And if anybody wants to see it the next day, it's still recorded. And then hopefully, early in 2023, it will be fixed. So that's where my thoughts are.
Councillor Heistad?
Yeah, so, and I would not agree with the shutting down the system. I'll tell you why. Through the MGA, guys like me that work in Edmonton or Calgary, Red Deer, all over the province have that ability to Zoom in on a Monday meeting if I'm not available. And I think that that would actually negate me being involved in my elected duty and my role. And I understand that that was through the MGA that we have those means to do so. I see that the Zoom was working prior to the shift. And I think that is just the easiest fix for now. As to technology, you guys could do an RFP and then it's gonna take months and months, it could be months and months and months before we're back up. So, and I'm gonna talk about me and my position is, I believe I have a right as a councillor to have that ability if I'm on the road. Thanks.
CEO Becker?
Mayor Barkley, to Councillor Heistad's comments, and that's what the policy would read, you know, it really depends on what, if you want to make Zoom available, because you do, through the MGA, you have the ability to be present when you're digitally connected in. So Zoom would be that piece. So we're saying we can make it available to council members likely through your policy. And if it breaks down, then, it breaks down, but the different part is the public component. So again, it's up to your policy, which you don't have at this given time. So the nature of this conversation is to help us build a policy, come back to you likely on January the 3rd for your review.
Councillor Harrison?
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. Through to Councillor Heistad. I'm certainly not suggesting that we cut councillors out of the Zoom. I think we need to have that opportunity. I fully agree with you that, you know, when you're remotely away, that you have access to it, I'm more referring to the public. There's nothing worse than sitting at home, being a public member, watching something that you can't watch. And I've heard that from a number of the public, that it's frustrating, very, very frustrating. So just in summation, Councillor Heistad, I'm not suggesting that we cut councillors out of the mix, so...
Councillor Heistad?
Thank you, Councillor Harrison, and thanks to CEO Becker for clarifying that. Thank you.
Okay, so would you like a motion, CEO Becker?
Yeah, I think, just to get on the books, I think it's good to kind of measure and track it. A motion likely Mayor Barkley and council to consider, direct administration to draft a policy reference to public and council access to council meetings through digital channels, something of that nature? You can grab onto that and twist it as you like.
Okay, and did you want anything, did you want in that motion or another motion, that we're not going to offer digital access to the public at this time, or do you need that?
I guess we don't have anything, Mayor Barkley, to the 3rd, but I guess it would affect the 3rd. Did I get any advice? Right.
Okay, but maybe we can put out a notification, I suppose, like to the public. I think that would be appreciated.
I think that'd be fair. Your policy kind of exists, but not in written format, so I think that's fair.
Okay, then I'll ask somebody to make the first motion, that we direct administration to craft a policy with respect to digital access to our council meetings for both the public and council members.
I would make that motion, Mayor Barkley.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, carried. We also need a motion to accept the CAO report dated December 19th.
I'd like to make that motion, Mayor Barkley, please.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Maseros. Any further questions to the CEO? Nope, okay, all in favor? Okay, carried. And we move on to 4.2, council action control. Councillor Heistad?
Yeah, my question would be to CEO Becker and Cara. On the council control, I think the last one, there was that FCM piece in there, and I didn't see it on there. Am I losing my mind? Oh, there it is. Okay. Because it wasn't red. Nope, there's FCM for the conference. But I understood that we were still gonna discuss it. It was more on a committee level and bring forward recommendations in January.
Mayor Barkley, through to Councillor Heistad. So the reasoning for the action control is to keep everybody kind of in tuned of what needs to come forward, what has been completed, what hasn't. As CEO Becker had mentioned at our last council meeting, is that the ones that are red, there is no more direction for administration to move forward. So I did take that one off because it was discussed at budget, which was part of it. My understanding was that come time for those memberships or positions on committees to come forward, that you would bring that forward again to council requesting... Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
Councillor Heistad?
Yeah, and how I see it is, I think it's important to have it on there so that we have further discussion on, because we did talk about it through budget as to how we're gonna allocate potentially an opportunity or funds aside and develop a policy for education. That's how I was looking at why we keep it on the radar. I could be totally off base, CEO Becker, but that's how I was looking at that piece on a personal level, but as well as some of the discussion that was brought up for PD for us.
CEO Becker?
Mayor Barkley, to Councillor Heistad, so the first item on the one regarding FCM conference, that one has been approved. That one's red, that could be red, right? That one's basically done. We've assigned two council members to go to Toronto FCM. The second one is really to question back to council how you wish to see this or talk about it during a council meeting. So right now, administration's not... Sorry, I'm getting them backwards, actually. The first one we're still to talk about. All right?
No, there was one.
Oh, it's gone.
For him.
Yeah. Sorry, sorry, Councillor Heistad. So we can have that reinstated, so to complete your dialogue. And then to re-instate it, we certainly need direction from council, how you wish to engage that conversation amongst council. Because really, it's outside the realm of administration, unless you have some direction you want from us.
So CEO Becker, with respect to the funds that have been allocated during the budget for education, how would you like that to be handled? So if, I don't know, Councillor Bates, I'll just throw his name out there, wants to go to something and that allocation is already there, it doesn't need to come before council, correct? He could just let maybe Cara know that, oh, I'm going to attend such and such, and allocate a piece of that funding to that particular event? Or how would that work internally, I guess?
Mayor Barkley, to your question, even that, it would be in a written policy. So it's clear, and it's how do you communicate where you're going and how? Or is just, you know, if the policy is, you don't need any guidance or any communication amongst council, that would be a written format regardless. So what I'd suggest is that through Corporate Services, through Ledge, we'll do some research on some draft policies, we'll come back to you for your consideration, and you can add and delete from there. But I would encourage council to have a level of engagement prior to going to different education or events. I think it's just, you see it the other way. When you don't, and it certainly creates question, I think that the more council can engage and communicate, the better. But to complete my ramble, we'll come back to in a written format policy.
No, for sure. I think it also helps, too, like, you know, coming back and you want reports and that kind of thing to, you know, make sure that we're getting something out of the participation, right? So, well, Councillor Dunham, sorry.
Sorry, Mayor Barkley, through to CEO Becker. So until we have a policy or something in place that sort of outlines how we were to do it, for example, there is a conference in April that I would like to attend, being part of the Economic Development Committee. At what point in council would I do that during the roundtable, or at what point would I bring that up? Is it something that would be put onto the agenda? How would we approach that until we have a policy in place?
What I would, Mayor Barkley, to Councillor Dunham, I think what we do is have a... Just communicate that conference, so we don't make sure, we make sure we don't miss any early bird registrations. And then you can come back in roundtable and get the appropriate support through resolution would be the best way. I don't think it'll take long to develop a policy, probably within January, we should have a policy developed, or... Okay. But, yeah, so just communicate back into the chambers. Councillor Dunham?
Councillor Wing?
Excuse me, thanks, Mayor Barkley. To CAO Becker, I would actually like to see that particular piece put back on the action control, because from what I remember, and actually the conversation that I do remember about it, it was more than just around whether we were sending somebody to participate at FCM. It was around the leadership that we were contemplating undertaking by having people involved. So whether it's Alberta municipalities or whether it's FCM, we have people that want to be involved in committees, we have people that would like to perhaps be involved in boards. And so budget is one part of it, but commitment in general and why we would want to be involved at that level, I think, is important. So I would actually really like to see it put back on here and then we can have that conversation. Thanks.
I will have someone make a motion to accept the action control as information.
I was gonna speak. I agree with Janice, so just appreciate that. And the reason why I want, this is my last statement on this one, is because we do have a delegation going to the next conference, and they may want to jump on a committee to advocate for rural municipalities or the cities. And I think it's important that we have those advocacy roles. What I was looking at, it was, it's really important to have a voice in those committees, so I appreciate that. I'm ready for the vote.
Okay, could I have someone make a motion to accept action control as information, please?
Mayor Barkley, I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you. All in favor? And we will move to 5.1 with Director Kennedy on the Aquatic Centre update, please.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Barkley. So I'm just here to provide council a quick update on where we're at with the Aquatic Centre project. So since August, the team has worked on the pre-validation of four options. The options included a review of a renovation option, renovation with small addition, new build at 20,000 square feet, as well as a new build at 23,000 square feet. The full IPD team was finalized in September, and we've been meeting weekly, either on Thursday in person in Edmonton, or virtually on Wednesdays. During these big room meetings, the teams review the progress of each team member's list, we address any concerns or questions, we track the schedule and costing, as well as review next steps for the following meeting. Within the validation report, we have targeted five values. Value number one is uniqueness. The facility will have unique programming in the central Alberta region, it focuses on the retention of residents' use, and is grounded in Innisville. Designed based on a local community reflecting the surrounding landscape and region. Collaboration. Collaboration is defined as two or more people working together to complete the tasks effectively, efficiently, with clear identified goals, objectives, and outcomes in a respectful manner. Collaboration shall emphasize teamwork, team growth, innovation, innovative thinking, equal participation, and shared leadership. Sustainability and efficiency. The project is mindful of the longevity of the facility with respect to operational efficiency, energy efficiency, cradle to grave, carbon footprint. This includes consideration of growth of the community and the ability to expand and modernize a facility in an efficient manner. Quality. Quality includes the validation, design, construction in a manner that delivers a timeless building. Community satisfaction. We want to create a community hub that is accessible to all ages, skills, and abilities. We will keep the town council up to date and seek feedback as required to ensure the community values are incorporated. So in September and in October, the team completed... So in September and in October, the team completed a review and analysis of the site selection for the new build. Four options included the existing pool site, arena site west, arena site north, and the arena site south. In November, uh Megan, myself, and Trish, as well as Stephen from group two, had a tour of the Drayton Valley Aquatic Centre while it was still under construction. This was able to provide, was able for us to provide feedback to the IPD team on what we liked and disliked about the new build. We heard from the town of Drayton Valley's key team members on the process, as well as the site superintendent on the construction. Overall feedback uh from both members was very positive towards the IPD process. The team has been focused on meeting or exceeding the existing pool programming while minimizing the footprint in order to minimize overall cost, including unique features that other centres in central Alberta do not offer, energy efficiencies for now and the future, and utilizing the IPD team's experience in both the design and construction. The delivery of the draft validation report is scheduled to provide, to be provided to administration by mid-January, um with the presentation to council by mid-February. This will allow us just to provide feedback um to the team, uh to put any revisions to the validation report before coming back to council, so. If you have any questions?
All right, thank you. Councillor Dunham?
Thank you, Mayor Barkley, through uh Director Kennedy. Can you refresh my memory, please? It's been a few months. Did, when you came back to us with the last report, was it not finalized, or was it not put in that the the site selection was going to be on the south side of the current arena and curling rink? Or was that not decision not made, or that direction made?
Yep, uh yeah, so we did come back to council in regards to those reviews of options. So we are looking at uh south of the building, south of the existing arena.
Okay.
Um in regards to that site selection.
Thank you.
Councillor Heistad, or I'm sorry, councillor Maseros, did you have your hand up?
Thank you, Mayor Barkley.
I only see a part of you.
Oh. Which part? Can you hear me?
Yeah, go go ahead.
Okay, no, I just wanted to um just to say to Director Kennedy and team that I was super impressed with the values that you put together. They're so tailored and targeted and on point to, I think, all the discussions that we've had in council, and uh they're not, they're not um, you know, they're not just sort of generic values clearly, and I I can tell that um you spent a lot of time and came up with something that works really well.
So Director Kennedy, can you tell us anymore about the uh the experience, like from your perspective and and what it's been like, say, compared to the other way of doing things?
Sure, um it it's it's been a bit of a roller coaster, to be honest. Started out really good, I thought the process to to uh combine the team was really good. Took me a little bit of getting used to the front end costs of of getting the team together and and providing it, but I I think the value came in with, just as as councillor Maseros said, it was the experience of the team to put in five values of what's really important, and they learned what was important to the town, they were actually able to to dive in and and give us some some really valuable feedback. The weekly meetings are very productive, actually, I'd, I'm very impressed with those because I seem to get, I take a little while and I'm wondering what the heck's going on, and then I go to the big room meetings and it's like, holy smokes, we're getting a lot done. And then we walk away and we're all, you know, pumped to get going again. So that weekly meeting I I find has been very beneficial. I believe, yeah, we're gonna have a very strong report to provide you with with a lot of targets, a lot of tick boxes, as we call them, that we've hit, I believe, um that will hopefully, yeah, impress council with what we've got, and come back with with a project that's, you know, we can move forward with.
Great, sounds good, thank you. So we'll have somebody um, do you have a question, councillor Bates?
Yeah, I think so. So my question would be, um, when you were, when you were at Drayton, did, were there any discussions about what funding they were able to achieve? And I I'm kind of concentrating on the funding component. As we go forward, will we get an update each time of, hey, we've found this, or we, you know, we found this to be closed, or like, get an update on that, and then even, say, mid-January or whenever this happens, get a report too on what the current borrowing cost would be at that time? And maybe that, you know, the next goalpost on that? Because I think it's important that we know that.
Yeah, uh, councillor Bates, so a couple of things. So yes, uh in regards to Drayton Valley, we we did talk to them about funding and how they were able to achieve. So they were pretty much at the same, they were, let me say that, so they had a set amount of money that they knew that they had already set aside, but they needed the funding to move forward. So so they had, I think they had ten, $10 million, five million of theirs, five million of the county, but they needed the grant in order to proceed because both couldn't, couldn't debenture the rest. So really, it's a very, very similar process. They formed a team, a grant writing team, um and just started going after grants, and then the project paused while they did that. As soon as they found out that they were gonna get approved, they went into revalidation and they started the process again, um to revalidate, make sure costs were current, what could they fine tune, what could they go forward. During that process, they were able to actually refine their costs, just because of the timing, they were actually able to add some things to the project. It just worked out that way. Doesn't say that that's will happen for us, but they were able to do that after, I can't remember what the fir- the pause was, but they were able to achieve some some goals that way. In regards to your second question on on the funding, I think we'll, we'll be able to come to you during the validation review of the report and provide you with, you know, one, yeah, what is our, I guess, our financial status for it, as well as what does escalation look like? That's a big discussion for us right now within the the team is, what's realistic? Like, what's realistic in four months? What's realistic in 14 months of where this project will be? And it's, and it really comes down to an industry guess, as, you know, what is it going to be? So they've gone back and they've done a fantastic job of providing us a lot of history that we'll be able to provide you in some good detail, I think that'll help with ex- with really explaining that. And it and it comes down to then, do we get a grant, and then depending on the grant size, do we wait more knowing this escalation's coming, or do we go to the bank and pay the interest? And and we'll be able to explain that a lot more detail to you once with the report. It's it's one of the, probably the hardest ones that we're dealing with right now in the in the process, is how to deliver that to council so that it's it's updatable as we go as well.
Okay, well, that sounds good, so, and I get it, that the construction escalation would be really difficult, but I'd also like to get a, a real time uh in January, what, you know, if we went to borrow that day, and then where do we see the borrowing costs going to? So, thank you.
Councillor Heistad?
Yeah, um, thanks for the work on this, Director Kennedy. Good questions, councillor councillor Bates. How I'm looking at this IPD process is that you'll come back to us, from my understanding, on this, the pre-validation, come back, but also see an important piece for us, um getting those tours and making sure that we have a better mindset of how big the project is. I I think sitting here and and being involved in buildings in the past is it, the understanding of the complexity of the the job and the work that's going into it, and and that's what, for myself, um I I think it's really important that we see other projects that are going across the province, and I know that we discussed that previously. And and I have to, you know, in my role, be patient and wait for the details that are coming out, but um, and and that's all I have to say, but thanks a lot, appreciate it.
Okay, we'll have a motion then, please, to um accept this report as information.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor Barkley.
Councillor Bates, any further questions? Okay, all in favor? Okay, unanimous. And we will move on to six point one, correspondence and information. I just wanted to point out item number three, so this came out of our last regional mayor's group, South Central Mayor's Group. Mayor Colby is a retired Calgary Police Service member, and he and his colleagues, retired colleagues of actually being recruited by Suri Police Force in the last several months. So um this was a discussion that came up at at the the group meeting, and uh Mayor Colby offered to craft this letter, and if council wants, other councils want, um this could be sent off. I'm not sure that we need to do more, we've done a lot already, but um it is here in our correspondence if we want to do anything with it. So I thank him for that, since it's pretty thorough.
Mayor Barkley, then to follow up on that, do you, do you feel that you've had adequate conversations with our elected representatives that we don't need more? I certainly find that this letter is really informative for discussions that the rest of us can be having, but um, you know, do we, do we, do we need to send something more now to our provincial folks from all of us, as opposed to ju- like the the meetings that you've had?
I I personally don't think so. I I think Innisfail has sent its fair share, and of course, we're a signatory to the National Police Federation as well, to their um advocacy, so I think with our open, our town hall and everything, I've had conversations with our MLA, so um I don't think so, but it's it's up to council, whatever, whatever you'd like to do. I think maybe some other councils haven't been quite as involved as as we have, but... And can you go back to the list again, please, Cara? Sorry. There we go. And just a bit of an update from RPAP, so it looks like they will likely do, I I think Alicia's just in the process of planning, but um likely do a health career day at, with the Innisfail High School in March, um kind of in the process of organizing that right now, so that will be fun. They had one in Brooks recently and was very well attended, there was 48 students that took part in that one, so keep everybody abreast of those activities. So if there's nothing further, we'll have somebody accept the correspondence as information.
Mayor Barkley, I would move to accept correspondence as information.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, carried, and then we will move into council reports, so we'll start with councillor Heistad today.
I don't think I have much to report, just getting ready for the holiday season, and um, yeah, that's off the top of my head. I want to thank all of you that went and handed a pizza out to town staff, and thanks for doing that, and appreciate Tom Lindell coming in and and doing the message to our community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and then we're going to councillor Harrison next.
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. Yes, very quiet past week, and I'd just like to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, and uh 2023 is gonna be a fantastic year. Thank you.
And councillor Maseros?
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. Also, a a quiet week for me, council-wise. I I would just like to um note that I was remiss last week in not acknowledging and thanking councillor Heistad for taking my MPC duties on. Thank you.
Okay, and councillor Dunham?
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. I as well, uh, at least for council, it was very quiet last, last week. On that note before passing it over, I do want to acknowledge that this is our final meeting of the year, and I want to say thank you to town administration and for my fellow council members for what I consider to be a a brilliant year, and, you know, it's, we've had some ups and downs, but I think it really has set a tone for this town, and I'm really looking forward to what we're gonna be doing next year. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, and councillor Wing?
Thanks, Mayor Barkley. Yep, so we had MPC last we- or, I guess, last week, but our MPC this coming has been cancelled, so we're done, MPC is done for 2022. The chamber board of directors had their December meeting last Wednesday, um moving forward and planning has begun for the 2023 trade show on March the 31st and April 1st, the arena is booked, and so we're looking forward to that work. And then I attended my first face-to-face meeting with the executive committee of the Parkland Regional Library in La Combe last Thursday, someone like councillor Teresa Rilling is the new board chair for Parkland, uh so that was, it was good to be able to put some faces to names and meet some of these folks from from the region. So that's good for me, thanks.
And councillor Bates?
So last week I did attend the Mountain View Water Commission meeting, and uh we did pass the second and third reading of the budget, so the the water rate increase will be as was sent to administration previously as estimated. I also enjoyed the Tagish lunch prior to the school reading to three grade two classes, and I found that very gratifying, actually, and the personal dynamics of those children are, it's just very entertaining to watch as you're, as you're participating with them. And tomorrow I'm participating in the energy station attendance at the school at the St. Marguerite, um as per the energy hub commitment from the last meeting we had, and I too will echo then the Merry Christmas and to administration, council, and the town.
Thank you. So last week had the Cape organizational meeting, and then the Central Alberta Mayor's Group. At that group, we had Bev Slager from the Central Alberta Search and Rescue do a presentation. So this group, uh they donate about two and a half million dollars a year in time and equipment to uh Central Alberta Rescue. There's over 1,200 volunteers that work with that organization. Come January, they actually are hosting a team from Malta who wants to come and do cold Canadian winter search and rescue, so should have come this week. But it it's really quite, quite a, it's obviously a wonderful organization, they've been taken out of the um, they've been removed from the emergency call system for some reason, so that's a a bit of a a strange thing for them to have to deal with, but we will probably see a letter at some time in the new year. I think they're going to be reaching out to municipalities to get some funding, they get zero funding from the province, so it's always been through donations and whatnot, but um they'll probably be looking at around five cents per capita funding at some point in time coming forward, and and I don't know, it might even be wise to have them come in and do a presentation at some point in time to to hear what they do. So they go from Saskatchewan border out into the Clearwater County area, I believe, and and then Pinoka to Old Stidsbury area, so it's a pretty large area that they cover, and like I said, it is all volunteers, so you'd have no office staff or anything, and always seem to be looking for places to park their equipment. One rope, when they fray a rope on a rock from rescuing somebody off the side of a mountain, it's 28, $2,800 to replace that one rope. So very expensive equipment and um obviously a good group of people. So I was also at the Tagish lunch at operations on Friday, and then John Wilson Elementary School with the Christmas reading, so it's always fun to ask the kids about the two elves on the shelf in the library, Jangles and Jingles. Jangles is the bad elf, and Jingles was the good elf, and there was all sorts of stories that came out of that. And then this morning was at um St. Marguerite's with the the energy fair there, that was fun, there was four stations set up, one was solar, one was wind, one was biomass, and one was circuits. So I'd like to shout out to Ken Kowalczuk, who says he wants to be an electrician now, but we did blow some lights up, we put too many batteries together and and put them together and blew some lights out, but other than that, we did okay, and we'll be back there again tomorrow morning as well, so lots of fun. So Merry Christmas to administration, and uh thank you to councillor Bates, who came and helped deliver pizza today, and the crazy weather, we were out there, we looked like the the skip the dishes people, we even had the pizza bags and everything, so we had the skip the dishes bag coming out of the car, so if you hear any rumors that we're doing skip the dishes now, they're not true, but um- That's right, yeah, yeah. So Merry Christmas to all of council, and looking forward to the new year, and actually looking forward to the next couple of weeks, even more. We'll move into upcoming events. There we go. Easy over there, Kara. Yeah, a circuit problem, yeah, get Ken to fix that. So we'll just have somebody make a motion to accept this as information.
Mayor Barkley, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Counselor Dunham, all in favor? Okay, carried. And then, I think we will have a motion to go into closed camera.
I'll make that motion, Mayor Barkley.
Thank you, Counselor Maseros, all in favor?